Stop shutting down the voice of the people and you won't have a problem. Because we're gonna speak whether you want us to speak or not.
As tensions rose, Hennyard telling the people at tonight's meeting, the back and forth yelling was keeping the township from conducting business. Hennyard is currently the focus of a federal criminal investigation and has been named in several other lawsuits involving current and former Dalton Village employees.
Our Weekend Watch signs a spotlight on government activity. And this morning, we're taking a closer look at the subpoena and ongoing investigation into Dalton Mayor and Thornton Township Supervisor Tiffany Hennyard. The Illinois Answers Project found that federal investigators are now seeking records from a suburban contractor after the village of Dalton paid them hundreds of thousands of dollars in no bid, no contract work in 2022. And here to talk more about this is Illinois Answers investigative reporter Casey Toner. Good morning, Casey. Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
Okay, so Casey, tell us a little bit about this subpoena and what you guys have found so far.
Well, we found that in 2022, at the urging of Mayor Tiffany Hennyard, the village of Dalton paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in no bid, no contract work to a west suburban contractor named Oak Construction. And this is notable because Oak Construction is linked to multiple public corruption cases. And furthermore, Oak Construction is named in the subpoena in the ongoing federal investigation of Tiffany Hennyard.
Oak Construction. Okay, so tell us a little bit more about what you have learned about this entity.
Okay, Oak Construction is based out of Summit, Illinois. And right now, the president of the organization had pleaded guilty to bribing a Cook County assessor's official in exchange for tax breaks. And his late father was also implicated in a bribery case involving former Alderman Cary Austin. And now, they're at the center of this other investigation in the village of Dalton.
So in terms of-
Is there a motion to approve minutes for February 6, 2023 for regular board meeting? And a motion to approve February 27, 2023 special board meeting? Is there a motion? Is there a second? It's been motion and second. Any discussion? I do have one thing to say. Just so everyone knows, when the clerk do the minutes, they are supposed to write word for word what it is you guys discuss and talk about. You cannot say refer to the tape. Where is the tape? There's no tape. So you have to write it word for word. And the clerk has not been doing that, so I hope Board of Trustees, you are reading that. Because on that, it says refer to the digital tape. And she's supposed to write it word for word, just like Mary Kay did in the past. She wrote it word for word what we discussed in our board meetings. So that's just some advice.
No, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Minutes are summarized. We do not write word for word.
Clerk, so people can get it right, you have a deputy clerk. And we pay that deputy clerk. You utilize your resources that you're given and make sure the people have what is stated at the board meetings. I would appreciate that. So people not just voting on anything, because you write word for word. Oh, no, clerk, you write word for word what you say. But you don't write word for word what I say or what any trustee said. But no one's reading that, but I did catch that. So I'm putting it on record, and that's for the record, and that's word for word what I'm saying that you're doing. So you get paid to basically do the minutes. And so does your deputy clerk, but you guys are not doing it. You referring people to a tape, supposed to write up the minutes and then give them to the board for it. So I just want to put it on the record. That's it. That's all. Please call the row.
And I want to put it on record that you can also look on YouTube and resummarize.
I'm not looking on YouTube.
So trustee Brown?
All right, motion passed, and then that's another seat that I will be coming after soon.
Absolutely, as well as yours.
Okay. Let me try. You gotta get the minutes right first. Thank you. All right, moving on. Next, we have-
Don't want to take care of attorneys that's taking care of the village. So it seems like you don't want to do nothing at all. So we have to move in prayer to get this done. With or without you, it's gonna get done. I'm done, ma'am.
See, they don't care about no laws. He said with or without.
With or without you too.
They don't care.
With or without you too, because you don't care about this village. All you do is just want to put on a front.
Yes.
And when I was talking about my mother, I'm talking about you. Stay away from my mother. Stay away from my mother. Take care of this village. Take care of this village. Take care of seniors. Put the roof and the windows back out here. Put the sidewalks back out here. Put the sidewalks back out here. Take care of the roof and the windows. I got the right one because you in the wrong seat. I'm done, ma'am.
You got the right one.
I'm done.
You got the right one.
Let's move forward.
Y'all, every time something happen, y'all blame it on the trustees. It's more than that trustees that hate y'all. You a liar. You a liar and she a liar.
Can you please call the row?
Now whoever went to your mama house, you gotta check them.
My guys are working hard when they don't have to. They can go somewhere else. They choose to stay. So don't say go hard and go home. What I need you to do is just vote for what we need.
Can I respond? I mean, since you made a statement, can I respond? I said go hard or go home because, of course, everybody was prepped to say whatever they had to say today. But let me speak to say this. When we talk about what we not doing, trustees don't walk around with video cameras and drones showing every move they make. They don't have the resources that somebody else have on the taxpayers' dime to show everything they doing. These people sit up here talking about we ain't did nothing. Well, all they're doing is listening to what somebody told them. For somebody to sit here and say the resources that we're taking away, for one, we have exceeded and over exceeded the budget that was initially put in. And so when people, we're getting emails talking about the cars being repossessed, and then somebody sitting here talking about that they know the money is there, I have a problem with that. Then when you bring the issue to, everybody knows that police is very valuable. But when you saying you here two or three o'clock in the morning, you here because you understaffed. You understaffed because don't nobody want to work in Dalton. So when we talk about, yes, the police, they are doing their job. When I called you, you came immediately. So I've never said that. But at the same time, when something is happening, y'all have to stop saying it's politics. It's not politics. This is reality. Have you looked at the bank account lately? Do you know how much money is in there? Because I don't understand why a resident is coming telling us that we owe her $500 from five months ago. So have you looked in the bank account?
So let me say this. Let me say this, and then I'm gonna leave it alone, because we can go back and forth.
We don't have to.
No, no, let me finish, trustee.
We don't.
Okay. Because when you say that, guess what? Because you said we're understaffed. We're understaffed because guess what? We're not at comparable salaries for a police officer coming here. Okay? We're un- I let you talk. We're understaffed because every time you get up here, you, trustee House, trustee Brown, trustee Norwood, get up here and say no to something that be said yes. Okay? You talk about that, guess what, the bank account. But the money that goes into the bank account or could go to the bank account, you vote down. And if I offend you, please forgive me. But let's talk real. Vote for what is right, not for what you want.
I'm not offended at all, and thank you so much. Good guy. All right.
Mayor, can I comment?
Okay, before we start this back and forth, let my administration finish with their reports, because all they're gonna do is turn into a back and forth, and then we never gonna get out here. So go ahead, Kim.
Why are we treated like this? This is just not right. This is just not right. And Mayor Tiffany, let me tell you something. I've been through some good administration and some bad ones. Please, don't let this administration go down into history that you are the worst one. When you call down here, let me tell you something. You have no idea the type of treatment we get. These people don't know how to speak to us. You may not know, but I'm letting you know now. It's time for you to do something with your staff.
Time is up, ma'am.
It's time for you to do something with your staff.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay? That's my consent.
I'm addressing all the trustees. And I feel that it's not fair that we, the citizens, should have to pay for trustees to go out of town. Stan Brown, Andrew Holmes, and the police detail. I feel that that should not be on the backs of the citizens to pay for all that, for your accommodations, for your hotels, for your dinners. I think it's not right that our tax money is being misused this way. And I think it's horrible that Stan Brown is over financed and he has not addressed the deficit in Dalton. He has sat by quietly. Every time it's time to vote, pay the bills, pay the bills. Because you want us to pay for your accommodation when you was out there, out of town. You want us to pay for your dinner, you and Andrew, you and Drewie. I don't think it's fair. I don't think that we should be paying for all the detail. Now, Mayor, you got more detail than the governor of Illinois. He came here with one person to guard him. I don't know what's going on, why you need all this detail. I don't understand it. And we paying a lot of money for that shit.
I don't understand it. I don't.
That's your time, sir.
I really hope something is done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know my three minutes is up, but I'm not done, and I'm sorry. I need to keep going. Trustee Holmes said last month, you all can meet outside.
Ma'am, we appreciate what you're saying, but we have to stop, please.
I would appreciate-
You have your three minutes, and it's not fair to anybody else.
And set your differences aside to try to meet outside of this meeting.
We thank you, ma'am, but we have to be fair to everybody else.
Every time we come in here, we got some new money. First thing tonight, 6.8. If we got it, that's great. But why can't all the trustees, the treasurer, and everybody else see that? Where is it going? And if we're getting it, why isn't it being put where we want it? We got money and talked about the infrastructure. Nothing has been done. How many millions have we got, and you guys are still flooding? They say do the right thing, then the mayor needs to follow the rules. There are ordinances in place that says trustees have to approve something. You talk about what people not doing, if they're not allowed to do it. But you gotta sit in these seats before you decide to judge somebody.
It's a lot been going on in our community. What saddens me is that every time someone cries woof, they have the media come out and do fake news stories on our village. And I'm just tired of the nonsense as it relates to people that want to run to the media instead of working out whatever the differences are. Truth be told, every single time someone runs, and then I have to go and clear it up and show you guys the facts on what they post. Because when they air something, and that's why it's called defamation of character, because they go and they post things about myself, about my administration, that be so untrue. I hope that this news reporter here today will actually do facts and not just write things off of people such as trustees that's bitter or people that may not be employed any longer, things like that. You shall always get the facts before y'all run a story, but y'all don't. Y'all run a story, then we have to clean up the mess. That's the part that bothers us the most. So I was not on the bank account for a year. So they talk about deficits, they talk about money. Data Wells was on the bank account for an entire year. So after that year has concluded, the judge made all these findings. And I'm gonna show you a video to show you my facts, so you can use it in your video that you drop, so you understand what it is I fight for. Somebody going to jail, just so you clear on that. I am pressing charges on the clerk, on trustee House, trustee Norwood, trustee Belcher, and trustee Tammy Brown. I'm pressing charges on everybody. So I want to make that crystal clear for your video when you run this video. So make sure you play that back. They keep this lawyer on retainer, and it gotta be something more than that. They keep him on retainer, won't fire him. As the lady said before, I won 21 lawsuit in county. So if you 21, oh, shouldn't you throwing the white towel? You should quit. Really, you should quit. You shouldn't even still be taking the residents' money, but they do. But then they running y'all, tell y'all this little fictitious story about, about... Okay, yeah, I got you. I got you. But let me finish this, because we right here, because we reached out to y'all, but y'all didn't respond. We reached out. Okay, wait. Okay, one minute, one minute, one minute. Let me finish. Let me finish my report, and then I got you. So I just want, I just want you guys to know while we are-
Just wait.
So I am here to tell you both sides, and that's why I do my mayor's address, my mayor report, so people can hear my side, because they hear all the fluff. They hear all the people that, whether they got a problem with me or not, that's the only side that you guys play. So play the video. Play the video. All right, so this gonna explain to you that back in October 2022, when the Board of Trustees basically went to take over the bank account. Play the video, too. Okay, pause for a minute. So this is trustee Belcher over there talking about you not even on the bank account. Boo. Oh, okay, now boo. So she wrote, she said that, so I want to point that out to you. Go ahead, press play. I'm glad it's funny. That's why you got a whole felony on your hands now. Keep laughing. Mm-hmm. Go ahead. So as you see, I can conversate through it for you guys. But as you can see, this is what happened at a board meeting. When they tried to take me off a bank account, they removed me from the bank account, reminding you-
They in the bank, removed me off a bank account. Where they do that at? They did it at them.
Me off a bank-
But those that don't know that, and then when they went to the bank, they didn't go right here in town. They went all the way to Orleans. So who you got a hookup with in Orleans to remove somebody from the bank?
They went all the way to Orleans. So who you got a hookup with? So why didn't they go right here in our town where we actually bank at?
They not telling you that, right?
No, here we go. Next video. Let's go. True. Yep, because I gotta show you a video so you can understand. And show you the facts, since everybody don't want to go and get the facts. This is the smokescreen that trustee Jason House always does here. He throw things in the air, and he hopes something sticks.
Please start with the smokescreen's truth. I need you to pay the people their money. It's not up to you to pick and choose how you pay. Okay, trustee Norwood? I'm taking the minutes. Okay, just move forward.
All right, just so we clear, the mayor runs the board meetings. And that's the problem we have here. Everybody want to be the boss. It's only one boss. I got elected to run the village. Okay? Let's be clear. Keep telling y'all I put some respect on my name. Okay.
Mayor, if I can be recognized as well?
Okay, can we, we gonna go to his report?
I have a statement I would like to make.
Okay, can you make it after his report, so since we following the order?
No, I'd rather make it right now.
Well, we gonna, we're-
We'll leave this motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, well, no, no, you cannot be recognized, because everybody want to go out of order. Right now-
Now we suspend the regular order of the agenda so that we can make a comment.
You have not been recognized, trustee. You have not been recognized. So while we do this game all the time, every board meeting, when y'all don't have your way. Last time y'all said y'all want to speak, I moved it up. And then after that, hold on, trustee, trustee, you out of order. It is his time to speak, just like how you told me last time y'all wanted to speak, we did that. So right now, we're following, we're following the agenda, trustee.
And I have a comment.
Trustee, it was about somebody with some lights on the car. We're not fun of, you could have spoken general announcements, and you did.
Now, you wanted to wait-
No, we're not. No.
You gave an hour and a half report.
And I had it on the agenda. And I had it on the agenda. So we're moving on. We're going to village administrator's report.
And the second attorney was asked on this piece.
No, you cannot. Move on. Go ahead, village administrator. It is your time. It is your time. It is your time. You out of order. You out of order. It is your time to speak, village administrator. You have the floor. Trustee, you do not have the floor, trustee.
Thank you, ma'am.
Go ahead, village administrator.
We discussed a-
You out of order. You out of order.
I'm asking the attorney to call order. If the attorney will not, then apparently-
We're following the agenda, trustee, as we always do. The agenda says it is their time. Village administrator report. Okay, I'm not gonna argue with you. All right. Go ahead, attorney. Go ahead, attorney. I know we doing it for the news, but go ahead. Go ahead. Grandstand.
I am not the parliamentarian. I'm the attorney. I'm actually special counsel. I'm not even the village's attorney.
Understood. I don't understand the problem. We're making a statement.
The motion to suspend the rules is just to take agenda items out of order. Are you looking to take one agenda item instead of-
My motion, my motion is to suspend the regular order of the agenda so that myself or any other board member can make a comment. I don't know why the mayor's afraid of comments when she been here for an hour making comments. Yes, sir.
You have to suspend the rules to move to some other matter on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to suspend the rules to revisit general announcements.
Second motion. Okay, so now y'all got something to say, huh?
Proper motion and a second.
Now you got something to say. That's funny. Okay.
Trustee Norwood?
All right. All right, you can call the row. Again, here we go. Wait till I say call the row, clerk, then you can call the row. Y'all always go out of order. There's no order here at all. Like, don't worry about, we fun of be here now, because I see they want the smoke, but let's go.
Trustee Stan Brown. It is.
So they didn't want to go and handle the business with the attorney. The attorney still on the clock. That's outside, and they just said that. And they want the attorney to sit here for two more hours, but they want the flow to grandstand. Okay, go ahead, clerkie. Let's go.
Mayor, I want to thank all the residents that do that. I get the phone calls and the prayers from them, say, how do you stay calm? And I guess I gotta make noise in order to get heard up in this house, because it's outrageous. My response to all the clapback, all the videos and everything else she does, is I'm just gonna say this right now, ma'am, and I really hope you just learn to grow up. Please. The community deserves to be represented better than that with these videos, all of this TikTok dance and everything else. Everything that I've said, I have a document that's backed it up. I haven't come out of nowhere with it. We are still sitting in a deficit. We have no financial reports that have been given in the last seven months. But I'm gonna say this again. Please grow up, represent this village with dignity. This meeting would not be this long if you learned just to summarize your points and move on. But we not gonna get that. So we'll be here for four hours, but if you'll notice, if we clock this time, we gonna be here for four hours, three hours, 37 minutes, and 26 seconds is gonna be the mayor feeling thriving. Then she wants to say, my work speaks for itself. And then show you a video of everything that she claims speaks for itself.
Okay, so let me clear it up. So that I'mma have the finance order, please. Thank you. I'mma have the finance director talk to you guys, because people always saying stuff out their mouth that is not true. Tangenique, he stated that he do not get financial statements or reports for seven months. Can you explain to the residents, which I always gotta prove it to y'all, hold on. Well, I have to prove to y'all and do videos and give you emails of them getting everything that they need. Go ahead, Tangenique.
The trustees receive a financial statements monthly that has not changed.
Mm-hmm.
An audit is in process, in progress right now.
Hold on. You gotta, you out of order. Let her speak like you just spoke.
The last fiscal year.
And just go with your point, so we can go on to the next person, Tangenique. You tell me one thing that these four trustees have done for you, for you residents. What have they done for you? Because everything that they create or make is against me, the mayor. It ain't nothing for the people, but yet they get up here and we have these long, drawn-out meets. Y'all didn't just hear what that lady said. She's still on the clock. But they okay with sitting here saying, let's suspend the board meeting for them to speak? Well, come on, to make it make sense. We gonna pay the lawyer to sit outside so we can do this, but not go downstairs and handle the real business, the real business? Because we can always do a show and eat some popcorn. I'm all about that. But at the end of the day, the real business is out the door. Well, we supposed to be downstairs talking about lawsuits and what we about to do. But we gonna suspend the minutes, the business, to sit here to go back and forth with each other on, well, you said this. I don't like that. Who cares? Move on. After that, is that it? That's it? Okay, so we'll go to you, then we gonna go on back to the business of the people. All right, I don't have 20 minutes of anything. I do feel that since we're only having meetings once a month, that if the residents are here, then that attorney can wait. Or maybe they should come at eight or nine o'clock after you get through with your report for us to go in the executive session. It's not fair for the citizens. And most of these people are seniors, that you sit here and have this long meeting, and by the time we come back from downstairs, because right now, it already says we have all these lawsuits that keep coming in, it's gonna be 30, 40 minutes. So why is it fair to the citizens in the community that you have them sit here for that amount of time? Moving forward, because the executive session used to be at the end of the meeting, that you put it back at the end of the meeting, the residents can then leave and go wherever, and then we still can handle the business. I don't think that's harming anybody. I release. Okay, so when you talk about playing fair, I think you guys never, ever played fair as it relate to me becoming the first female mayor of Dalton, winning by 82%. Come now, let me finish my statement. 82% of the people's voice in this village. How you dare backstab me, you trustee Belcher number one, that lost three seats, never won nothing. And then you trustee House, that would never won if you ran. So my problem with both of y'all, y'all was on my ticket. You both were. In two weeks in becoming a mayor, the ink didn't even dry yet, and you guys had a whole different agenda for me. But y'all didn't know. That scorpion and frog situation, huh? Y'all stung me, but they ain't know I had a scuba suit on, huh? Yeah, and I made it across the water. So all I'm telling you is that y'all gotta stop with the mess, because y'all keep on, keep on doing what's wrong. And you mad because I got something to talk about and y'all don't? That's because I'm working. While y'all talking about me, I'm working. STI say, y'all watch my life while I live it. That's the problem. So every time we come here, it is y'all amusement. That's what it is. You want a reaction out of me. I don't see y'all around town. I don't see you at a gas station, at a grocery store. See you doing nothing, Belcher. Nothing. But running your mouth. Nothing. That's it. You always got something to say when it's not even relevant right now, because why did you not say nothing when that lawyer needed to go downstairs to talk? But it wasn't, hold on. But you didn't do that. But now all of a sudden, everybody want to sit here, suspend the rules, and get mad when I got something to say too. Yeah, we all got something to say. But yet y'all point the finger back to me. But I keep winning all the lawsuits that you guys keep doing. Come on now, make it make sense. And then y'all need to fire that lawyer. I'mma keep putting it on the agenda to your fire, and other than that, I feel y'all in bed with people. Y'all need to fire that lawyer. All right, going back to the agenda. Go ahead, village administrator. Go ahead. Come on, Keith.
Does that better? Okay.
So is there any questions that you have about the one that's so could pay the bills? Because I say the same thing every single board meeting. What are your questions? We can answer right here in this meeting.
Okay, so I have one question. Previously, we had access to view the invoices, and now we do not have access to view the invoices. Why was a decision made to not allow us access to view it, and we changed this process to now ask questions? To me, it feels like something is being hidden, which is the reason that you don't want people to see invoices, which is the same reason these information is not put on the website. So what changed that we no longer have access to view the actual invoice?
Okay, so let's be crystal clear. Crystal clear. I don't have to hide anything. I do not hide anything. Anything you guys, actually, I'll get. You guys the one go do a spin cycle to the residents about you don't get stuff. When we clears, they show you emails to the residents that you receive everything you asked for. So we asked you then, and I'm still telling you now. If you have a question about a bill that you would like us to address, we will address it. Maybe something happened with your email. I don't know, but that's not me. That's tech. So call tech and find out what happened with whatever you're speaking of. But just to address it, we still made our stuff available if it was something you did not know, did not get, or whatever. But you got everything. Y'all get everything, because let's back up. Let's go down memory lane. When I was a trustee, for those that don't know, for eight years, I was a trustee, sat in the same seats that they sit in. We receive it via email, which they still do to this day. So nothing has changed. The only difference is I created something for them, which is my viewpoint. That was me, because I'm with technology. I'm the, what do I call it, baby boomers. So what I'm saying to you is that you still get the same information. Everything, all you have to do is push a button and read, and then go through the email, go through the warrant list, and then ask questions of the staff. If there's a true question, is there a legitimate question from anybody that you would like to know about this warrant list of anything, so we can answer the question? Because all this smokescreens are, come on, we over that. What's the question? Anybody got a true question about something we need to answer? So we clear it up so we can move on and pay the bills? Or if y'all not gonna pay the bills, don't pay the bills, but let's like not sit here for another 30 minutes? Because if y'all got a plan, like y'all always do, to take things off, just do that, and let's move on. Because that's where I'm at with it. Let's just move on. So what we doing? We paying the bills or we not paying the bills? Anybody? Nobody? We gonna pay the bills today? It's so, okay, so a motion and a second on the board. Who got a question? Somebody got something now, or we gonna pay the bills? Trustee Belcher has a- Go ahead. What's your question? Since we're only at the electronic warrant list, and I guess you're asking about both, I did see that Amazon is on the AP list and on the electronic list like how before. So I'm just keep trying to figure out that if these items are being paid with credit card, then why is it on the AP warrant list? Also, yes, I did see the email, but I was at my day job, which I have, so I wasn't able to respond. Okay, and guess what? That's a question for who? Because I don't do that, right? So that'll be a question for- Finance person. Exactly. Finance or who else? Or who else? Tennis. There we go. So you always say call you. Uh, but you did, I know, but you did come to me, and I would've got the answer for you, cause I don't do any of that.
We have questions, so are they gonna answer?
We gonna give you an answer if you give me a second, but I want to clear it up for the people. Because I wanna clear it up, because y'all go through, y'all go lying on people, cause I don't do nothing with it.
If our, if our access has been forbidden.
It has not, that's untrue, that's untrue.
We knew you was gonna say that. But if the access had been forbidden, we wouldn't have to go back, we would already have a decision of what's we gonna take off or not take off. You told, you said, do anybody got a question? Now I'm asking a question, and you going back and forth. I'm waiting on the answer.
Cause I wanna clear the mess up that you stand out.
Why you always gotta clear it up?
Because I wanna clear the mess up that you stand out your mouth, so people get the facts, yes.
Okay, that's, all, all it is, is a simple answer.
Any more questions? Anybody?
Yep, I got another question.
Wish y'all would've wrote them down, we been done, but go ahead.
I mean, if you give us our access.
It ain't about access, uh, trustee, I just made the statement, check your stuff, check your stuff.
All right, so the, the next question would be, uh, we received the email.
Remember when all y'all kept voting no to pay that vendor over and over again?
No.
Okay, so why you asking us, we gonna pay them?
Because he sent me an email, and as a trustee, that's what I do, I respond to email.
You guys voted, hold on, that's for the news, so y'all get it in the back. They voted to pay certain vendors, right? All passed, passed, to pay the vendors. Trustee House and that clerk right there said no, and once signed the checks that they voted to pay. They voted to pay all these vendors, and them two right there, cause they was on the bank account, would not sign the checks. Come on, man, right is right, wrong is wrong, but they all voted to pay them, all of them, except two, four of them voted to pay. That means it passed. We then produced the checks, gave it to trustee House, gave it to clerk Key, and neither one of them would sign the checks to pay the vendors. Come on now, like, they like to put it out there, put the truth out there.
That is the truth.
That's what they did, that's exactly what they did.
So you said you were back on the bank account, so the man wanna know when he gonna get his money.
Now that vendor's asking when is they gonna get paid? How does that work, what's the process? So again, that's what, administration, so administration will handle that, thank you. What else?
Okay, I'm.
Done? All right, all right, so back to the original motion. Go ahead, trustee Norwood.
So we have thousands of dollars on here for hotels, thousand dollars on here for trips, thousand dollars of dollars up here, on here for restaurants. Just last month, trustee Belcher announced that we hit a Thornton township event that was on our Dalton warrant list to be paid. The moment we mention it, our access to the system, where we can actually pull up the receipts to verify these things have been limited. Now, we can no longer view the receipts, and we continue to say that, but we sit here and say, you want us to approve things that we cannot see. Again, where's the transparency? Where's the RSPs? We keep saying that we have the money, but the, we're talking about vendors who haven't been paid. So when we say let's pay the people who we have approved first and move on, that's what we mean. Why, why not give us access back to the system? So we won't sit here for a whole, an whole entire hour and ask questions, when we could just get access to our system, and we can go back on my viewpoint, see the items that needs to be approved, and all our questions will be answered, and then we won't have a problem with approving these items. Thank you.
All right, and for the record, y'all need to stop mixing up my two titles, and I know y'all can't bear it, but township is township business, village is village business, that's it, that's all. Go ahead, trustee, uh, Holmes. All right, caller row. Told y'all y'all was gonna be here this long.
Hey, uh, clerk.
Caller row. That, that's it, we done, we done, trustee, let's go.
Yeah, this is for the amended one clerk, yes, and I'm talking to clerk.
Yes, it's the amended.
That's all I need to know, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
And you steady saying that you twen, what, you twenty-one and oh now, that's what you say, it's twenty-one and oh?
You got the numbers right, about to be twenty-three.
Obviously, if it's still in court, it's not a win, and they still doing their job. So no, we're not gonna terminate them. We got another attorney who he made sure that he said today that he was not our village council, because he's actually Tiffany's council. But we wanna make, he said he was not the village council when it was bought about, he's parliamentary.
Anything, but go ahead.
He said he's not the village council. But nevertheless, um, stop telling people that we're spending money on an attorney that you know that you're not putting on the warrant list to pay. So when you wanna smokescreen or whatever you're doing, just stop saying it, you know we not taking it off, and we gonna protect ourselves, cause he show not protecting us.
Okay.
Because you not winning nothing, anybody that got common sense, y'all would've fired y'all lawyer a long time ago. Let him, hold on, trustee. Let somebody lose a lawsuit, the first one, the second, I'm getting a new counsel.
Okay.
But yeah, twenty-one, twenty-one lawsuits, and y'all still losing, and you gonna keep him and retain him, stop it. That means y'all all tied up in the mess. But don't worry about it, where my video at you? Where my video at?
Play her video, too.
Where my video at? Cause you already know I got a story to tell, so as it relates to.
Now we gotta listen to his video in the middle of emotion.
You sure do, because I put on agenda every time, and y'all still don't choose to fire this man that keep losing. So tell me why, cause I asked at the last board meeting, and you guys said that, oh my God, face, look, tell me why that this lawyer, Odison, went and put in a claim for two million dollars to take money from the village. Please tell me that, please tell me that, that gonna cost you.
I'm not dissing anybody's financial savvy, but if you throw out two point nine million dollars, and a two point nine million dollars doesn't make any sense, cause it was based on last year, I hope you was paying the same amount for gas last year that you was paying this year, that doesn't make any sense.
And I think y'all should've thought about that before y'all did all this spending on everything else that was in the county.
About that before we started spending money on lawyers.
Uh, you haven't paid them, you haven't paid them, so if you wanna go there.
Hold on, trustee, you out of order, let him finish, you out of order.
So y'all steady talking about something y'all haven't even paid.
Millions of dollars that it costs to defend these lawsuits.
You still talking about something you haven't even paid.
You out of order, let him finish.
Trustee Belcher, you getting ready to throw out an arbitrary number based on how you feel.